Sorry, I was.
Oh, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, city, can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Dunsmear? Here. Counselor Gates?
Here.
Counselor Hall? Counselor Spangler?
Here.
Counselor Tinbusch?
Here.
Counselor Weaver? Mayor Drinkwine?
Here. Thank you, city. We are at the first chance for citizenry group comment. I don't have a way to tell. So if you can let me know if anybody wishes to speak during this.
Yeah, we don't have anybody.
Okay, great. We are now at the consent agenda. All of you have had a chance to read that over, I'm sure. Since we've had such wonderful amount of time at home. So if you don't have any questions, can I have a motion on the floor?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Can I have a second?
All second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are now at the public hearing portion of this, so I'm going to read. This part, and we'll get everybody on board. Is everybody on there saying so in case we have any questions or I need to? Refer, okay, I'm gonna start reading this. I will now close the city council meeting. I can't. In a gavel, so you're just gonna have to believe that it's closed. And open the public hearing. Um, we are going to. Be on the appeal for the 2020 oh one Appeal to Planning Commission Denial of Conditional Use Application 2020 dash zero one CU. Do I have any members of the council that wish to abstain or declare ex parte? No? Okay, the council will now hear the staff report on this proposal. Go ahead.
Okay. Can, uh, can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Please, no, thank you. Um, alright, so 2020 oh one. CU is a conditional use application to put hoop houses on a property in the industrial sanctuary on Noble Drive. The applicant, uh, Kevin McAllister. And it would be two hoop houses each ninety-five feet long by twenty feet wide for the purpose of hemp seed production. Um, accessory to their primary existing enclosed use. Oh. Let's see. I'll also just, uh, say right up front, I know, um, there's. Uh, some of the questions that we were kind of grappling with when we got this application. Um, and some of the questions that have come up are why, um. Why isn't this a, an agriculture agricultural use, which would be allowed outright? Um, the proposal does not include actual use of the land for agricultural uses as the plants would be grown in. Containers. Um, so technically we. With our, the way that our code would define that, it wouldn't be an agricultural use, so, um, it is not allowed outright. Um, and the, the other kind of. Question that came up was how is this, um, substantially different from hoop houses for the use of marijuana? Which is prohibited. But, uh, our code also pretty explicitly, uh, differentiates hemp from marijuana and, um, because they are. Different legally, um, then technically we don't prohibit. We haven't prohibited hemp houses or hoop houses for the use of growing hemp. Um, so that's why this is being, uh, treated as a conditional use application. Because it would technically be, uh, defined as an unenclosed light industrial use. So with that, here we are, it's on, it's at, um, eleven ninety Northwest Noble Indian Industrial Sanctuary. Their proposal would not include any new, um, employees. The hoop houses would be, would have, um, the. Kind of normal translucent siding, um, which would allow the sunlight to come in. And they would be using grow lamps, uh, for the hours before, um, sunrise and after sunset. They also, their proposal also includes surveillance cameras and fencing around the hoop houses that would. For the purposes of security and also to mitigate the light that would be coming off of them. Uh, here's an aerial view of the lot. I don't think I need to go into too much detail about the site. Sorry for how blurry this image is. The, the property in question is already, as you can see at the top of this picture. I think I have a pointer. Um, it's already developed with sidewalks. All of those, uh, requirements of the development code related to, you know, development standards are. Were met upon the actual development of the site. Um, it's connected to city utilities, everything. Here's their, um, proposed design. And here's where they would sit. With this being their parking lot and this being the existing building. The hoop houses would be just directly behind that building. And. Uh, it's hard to read here, but the space between the fence, this is their fence that they would put. Around the hoop houses, there'd be about five feet there. Between the back of the hoop houses and the back of their lot. So I'm not, I'm not gonna. Go through and read all of these, I will spare you all. Um, but, uh. This is all, um, kind of reiterated and in greater detail in the planning commission's report is the review of the applicable. Approval criteria and, um, standards, uh, that apply in the code. I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch mostly on what it was that the planning commission kind of took issue with. That made it, uh. That made them unable to, um, agree. Their decision was a, a tie vote, two to two in favor. Versus against, and so, um. The first problem was too much uncertainty. The staff report, um, originally proposed, um, conditions of approval. That included, um, mitigating odor and, um, light, so with the. Translucent walls or, you know, siding of the structures. There have been concerns about the light that would come off of those, and so, um. The proposal already included, um. You putting fencing around the structures, but, um. That, uh, a condition of approval just reiterated that requirement and would ensure that that fence needed to be at least six feet tall. In order to, uh, prevent that light from, um, shining out into the adjacent properties and into the right of way. Um. The other issue, uh. Is the concern about odor, um, even though obviously hemp and marijuana are not. The same legally, they are, uh, they have been observed to create very similar impacts in terms of the odor that can come off of the plants. And so, um. The original conditions of approval included, um, requiring that the applicant. Mitigate odor using the same systems that would be the same, uh. Like negative pressure and filter carbon filtering systems that are required for, um, marijuana operations. However, the, a couple of the members of the planning commission. Still, um, were concerned that the impacts, that those impacts would not be sufficiently mitigated by those. Conditions of approval. And that those impacts would still, uh, you know, cause unwanted, uh, consequences for the surrounding area. Affecting the character and, uh, just creating potential nuisances for neighboring properties. So that was one of the issues that came up. The other, um, is that question of what type of use is this really? Um, and like I said, there's, it's, uh. Understandable, um, that the use could be kind of defined differently based on what jurisdiction you're in. In other jurisdictions, this might be defined as an agricultural use actually, and therefore would be allowed outright, but because it's not a use of the land. With plants actually in the ground, uh, we don't define it that way, and therefore it's not allowed outright in our code. Um, and because it, it is a conditional use, it goes through this review of the comprehensive plan goals. One of those policies being that we retain suitable industrial land for industrial purposes, so the other, one of the other concerns. Of the planning commission was that this use, um, seems a little bit more agricultural and a little bit less. Industrial than what, uh, maybe the city is, um, hoping to use that industrial sanctuary area for. All of the other applicable, uh, approval criteria, uh, appeared to be met and were not. You know, uh, were not brought up as issues by any of the planning commission. Members. So the original nine recommended conditions of approval, again, I'm just highlighting the ones that, um. Came up as maybe the most concerning issues with this application. Were that the structures would need to be screened from view in order to mitigate the light that would come off of them. Another option could be to, um. Impose a condition of approval that would, um, prohibit them from using any artificial light at all. If that, if that concern, uh, seems like it couldn't be mitigated or, or if there seemed to be too much risk around. Allowing that artificial lighting. And then the other. Was that odor mitigation, um, and this kind of spells out. Well, it does spell out, uh, exactly what that would need to look like. All of the requirements, negative air pressure, doors and windows need to remain closed. And then lastly, um, another piece that kind of. Was added in there to allow some flexibility and that could be changed, um, shortened if the city council. Is to limit this approval to two years. Um, and that was put in there, um, basically just because knowing that some of those things are. Sort of unknowns and, uh, we have not had. This type of use, um, in the city so far, um, maybe we're not sure what it's gonna look like. It might be a little bit easier to approve this temporarily and see how it goes. And if those problems really are major issues, then maybe this approval would not get renewed. So, uh, at this point, the city council's options would be to, um. Deny the application as the planning commission did. Approve the application with the conditions as originally recommended. Approve the application with different conditions of approval. Or, um, remand the matter back to the planning commission for additional information and review. And I think that's all I have and will be happy to take any questions if now is the time for that.
Okay, we'll have a question, uh, part here pretty quick, so let's just, uh, get on with the rest of it here. Uh, is there any correspondence regarding this application? Taylor?
No, there was no additional correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I will now read a statement, um, from Luba. So this statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of record at the final eventuary hearing. On specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of the issue to be raised at the hearing or in person. By letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity. To respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay. Now would the applicant please come to the microphone? So do we have an applicant out there to speak on this?
Yes, we have Kevin McAllister, it looks like, on here.
Alright, let's hear from Kevin McAllister. Okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we were not.
This is my wife, Jordan McAllister. We were both.
Oh, okay, alright. You had me going there for a minute.
Sorry about that. No, um, everything's just a hundred percent on hold for us. Right now, um, with the company and everything that they've got moving forward, um, Kevin's not working out there actively and they put a hold on the business license. Until they figure out what they're gonna do. So right now, we're really just waiting until his bosses. And I'll let you explain that in detail, get with him on what we're gonna do next. As in, I don't know if they can do the greenhouses or if they wanna restructure that idea.
Yeah, just since the COVID nineteen thing hit, we kind of, uh, jumped off because we weren't. A hundred percent on after getting the last review, where it stated, uh. That we had, uh, we had been approved with, uh, conditions and, uh, or there were two, two against one, I can't remember the exact subject. But we were almost approved, so we were kind of about to jump in headfirst again. And, uh, it was just one of those situations where this virus came up and, uh. We already had something going on in Texas with another group of Texas hemp ventures. So we have that going on down there and, uh, we wanted to pick this up for a seed project. But, uh, with everything hanging in the balance right now, you know, it'd be great to get approved, but, uh, we still wouldn't start until. More things were solidified after this virus kind of like tapers down or does with it, the, the tail out of it, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we thank you for that. We appreciate you coming forward and letting us know that. Um, I don't know if that'll be easier or not to make the decision, but we'll go through the rest of this. Um, is there any questions for Kevin from the panel? Any councilor wish to speak on this?
Uh, my, I just have a question, um, is there? Not saying that anybody's doing anything shady, but, you know, just to protect the city, uh, is there, um, regulations as far as, you know? I don't know that any of us know the difference between a hemp plant and a marijuana plant. Is there somebody that regulates that?
There's three different species of cannabis and hemp is one of the different species, it's the one that does.
But is there someone, you know, if, if we approve this and this goes in, you know, marijuana, marijuana is prohibited in that spot. So, um, is there a way to, you know, to, to somebody regulate what they're growing? Does somebody go in and look and see? You know, what it is?
The ODA, once everything got ramped up, should have been out there periodically. But, uh, they never, they never showed up in the beginning and we did pull COAs, uh, certificate of analysis. On several plants that we finished out there because that was supposed to be primarily a seed project that we were doing out there. And, uh, we got the COAs pulled with a batch of seeds that we pulled out of there on the, on the indoor side. And all the COAs clearly state that it's hemp. It's, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so just with those COAs and, uh, we should have some more COAs coming up. With, uh, another small seed project I'm doing, I'm just trying to come up with an auto flower seed. That we can plant in the lower part of Texas. I can't remember the name of the city right now. We're in a small town right near, uh. Corpus Christi, I think it is, it's in the, in the bottom of Texas. And, uh, I haven't been out there, I've just, my partners are out there, so, uh. You know, I, I'm just, like I said, I'm trying to create a seed, generate a seed, uh, an auto flower that we can grow year round in that part of Texas. So that's what'll be coming up in here in next, in the next, uh, sixty to eighty days. And that's why we want the greenhouses if, you know, that's why we would need the greenhouses if we needed to scale this thing up. And, uh, provide seed for that Texas group down there, so. And those will have COAs also after we pull the seeds out, but, uh.
Did that answer your question, Jerry?
Yeah, absolutely did.
Great. Is there any more questions from council?
Um, I had a couple of questions for Taylor going back to her actual presentation, if we can go back to that at all.
Sure.
Um. So, uh, Taylor, my first question for you, so we've talked about the differences between, um, hemp and marijuana if it relates to our code. Out of curiosity, do you know how differently those two are taxed as well?
I don't, I don't know anything about the taxation behind any of it, just the definition, yeah.
I'm curious about that. Um, when it comes to the light pollution, um. So i- is there an idea of how many lumens, uh, green houses that size are going to produce even with a six-foot fence around the sides of it? How much light is gonna shine up?
I'm not sure, and I think that that's something that, um. Also could, I mean, the design of the actual lamps can affect that, like, um. And this isn't something that I've delved deeply into at all by any means, but, um. You know, in general, lamps that have kind of a, a covering over it, you know, a shade, um, to direct the light exclusively down. Obviously help, but I, I think that that's, um. The angle of the lamps and the shade of the lamps, I think that those are things that, um, could be. You know, uh. Looked into and maybe, um, regulated by conditions of approval if, if need be.
Well, so, um, I reviewed the Sandy Dark Skies Ordinance that they passed a couple of years back, actually. And I, I found it really interesting. They, they clearly define what is considered light pollution in their city. Um, we don't necessarily have a code like that for our city, but I think that using, uh, uh, sort of a baseline like that. Is, is a really good direction to start with, at least until we develop our own code, uh, when it comes to a dark sky ordinance. Here out in the country, I love being able to see the stars. It'd be kind of, uh, a disappointment to think that we're going to allow. A use that is conditional and then, and then as a result have light pollution. Um, but your presentation, can you do me a favor and go back to the tax map? Um, the one that showed where the fence is going to go.
Oh, there we go.
Uh, that one right there. So when I'm looking at this drawing, the, the line with the circles in it is the property line and then the solid line says fence line. Now, am I incorrect in looking at this and I'm, I'm having a hard time picturing where the fence is going to be around these. These things, cuz it looks on this drawing like it's extended past the property line.
Oh, I see, um. I see what you're saying, like right here.
So, yeah, so it looks like the property line, the one with the dotted or with the circles. Is going through what is the proposed fence line around the hoop houses.
On this, I think on this diagram, the way that I understand it. These kind of extra lines outside of the property line are just here so that they could include this measurement. Right here and.
And that's what it is. Okay, so the, so where is the fence? Is it going to go on the property line itself? So the property line is going to be the new fence line?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted that one cleared up because I, I, I've had a hard time understanding it the way that it's drawn out, but I appreciate that clarification. Um, so, okay, so I guess. When it comes to the light pollution, I guess this might be a question now that I have for the applicants. Um, are there any, are there any sort of ideas as to how many lumens we're looking at, how much potential light pollution we are seeing? Uh, going up into the sky and not just, you know, trying to prevent light pollution to the other businesses around the perimeter. But actually shining up. That's my main concern and I guess that's kind of what I want you to address.
There should be nothing shining up with the design of these lights. They're, uh, they're focused, they're, they're focusing their energy on the plants, on the ground. You know, not, not, and they have a, a little system that sits above them that actually cascades that light downward. So, uh, there would be nothing going into the atmosphere and, uh.
And you're gonna model the existing greenhouses that are done, you know, with all the, the exhaust and the light shining down? Okay.
And if that is an issue, I, I mean, I don't wanna speak too fast, uh, cuz I don't know where our budget is. But, uh, we could always deprive, put a light deprivation system on these tents, on these greenhouses. That would, uh, keep light from coming out, but like I said, I don't know where our budget is, I would have to talk to my partners about it. But, uh, you know, that's. That's always an option we can do if the other one is just like a total nuisance, but I couldn't see that being a nuisance in, in that manner.
Well, I'm at least glad to hear you talk about the possibility of it and especially if we do approve the application with the two-year, uh, validity to it. Then maybe after two years, we'll have a better understanding of how it's going to affect our potential light pollution. And if after two years, we put that in as a condition that maybe, um, you'll have, uh, have had more time to plan for it as well, so.
Yeah, and I, I totally don't mind being the guinea pig, and if something does need to shape up and you're like, hey, check it out, too many lumens. You know, like, we, we could just sign that into the beginning of the agreement to where if it is something like that, it has to be addressed in.
Well, X.
X amount of days, you know, or we can, you know, sh- shut off so many lights until we have time to fix it in that timeframe. If, do you follow me?
I do. I, I love that kind of an idea, especially since it sounds like light pollution was one of the main concerns. Um, that the planning commission had, so if we're able to put in some sort of conditions that the light, the light pollution won't. Reach a certain threshold and if it does, that you have a certain amount of time to remedy that, then I would feel more comfortable with that personally.
Yeah, and I, 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 I agree with you guys too as far as that goes, because nobody knows what it's gonna look like once you tuck it inside. Of a bunch of plastic and how much radiant light will be bouncing off of everything, so.
And that was my main concern as well, so.
Absolutely.
Alright, so your question is answered, Katie, I'm.
Well, I guess I have one last question, I think it's for Taylor. So Taylor, based on how you were explaining things in the presentation. It sounds like if they planted the plants in the ground versus planting in, in the pots above the ground. That we probably wouldn't even be having this conversation today.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Taylor.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? From the council? Uh, seeing as our, oh, there are none, can I speak on this for a moment? Would that be okay? I think we should go back to when we first agreed to have marijuana in the light industrial park. Uh, though I respect the planning commission's, uh, statement, I think what we should be looking at is when we first as councillors and mayor sat down and talked about this. We all agreed that we weren't going to allow hoop houses for marijuana in the light industrial park. We all did. We all decided this together. So my, my fear in doing this would be that we are. Kind of going back on what we talked about, even though it's not marijuana, it's still, uh, in the same family. And I think we all went through this together and agreed that we didn't wanna have hoop houses in there. Now we're going back and talking about maybe passing. Uh, an exception and putting hoop houses in there, so I just, I just wanted to think about this before we go on because. So I just, I just wanted to think about this before we go on, because we're kinda, we're going backwards on what we talked about already. So let's think about that before we go on, and that's all I really wanna say on that. But uh moving along, so I have no more further questions, is that right? Okay, so I'm going to move on to the next. Are there any speaker request forms for anybody that wishes to speak on this? Okay.
I'm getting a hand raised from Kevin McAllister, the applicant.
All right, go ahead and allow that.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we're new at Zoom, so I wanted to make sure, just to what you were saying about um not wanting to have those hoop houses in the industrial park. It is, I know it is really close to marijuana, but from our perspective, I guess it's a total opposite. It's an agriculture and it won't be grown or processed out the way that you do THC. So even a lot of this that we're talking about with like the fear of the, the smell from the buds. We know that because of the maturity level that they're gonna get to and the fact that their focus is on seeds. But it's really, it's, it's, it's just not marijuana, you know, but we respect that you have to kind of treat it the same. But just wanna kind of throw that out there that it, it is different, you know, it's, it's for our side. It's maybe try and compare it to like a tomato seed and trying to cultivate really good tomato seeds. And um the greenhouse piece, again, we understand if it was, that you'd never wanted those out there. So we're, we'll hopefully be able to come to some common ground on that, but. Yeah, I just wanted to throw that in there. It's definitely not marijuana. There's, it's different, you know, that there's no smell. It's, if you were to come by and take a look at it in full bloom, you would be able to tell it was a seed project.
And that's another thing, I, I welcome you guys out there. If there's something else, something further I can do. I just wanna accommodate you guys because we are on your terms and uh we want the project to go, you know. As of, like I said, as of the virus subsiding or things being a little less chaotic than they are right now, you know.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that. We appreciate you giving us that ability to check that out for ourselves. That's always good. But uh, any other uh statements anybody wants to make? No? Okay, let's uh move this along. Does the staff app can have any additional comments in response to the public testimony? All right, at this time, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council. So um on this, you've all had a chance to uh go over this. Um, I think it's time to decide. So uh on this, I guess I have to make a motion, is that right? Would that be? So let's have a motion on uh accepting the uh hoop houses into the light industrial park. Uh, do I have the acceptance, some motion first forward? Is that right? Denise?
Um, I think that uh the, the motion, Taylor, what were the options to a, to approve the planning commission recommendation?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Denial.
I'm gonna clear that screen again.
Yeah, go ahead and put them up, yeah. So these are the four choices you have.
And would it be helpful, I, I wrote down what sounded like potential amendments to the conditions of approval. Would you like me to read those back at this point?
Uh, sure, yeah. Why don't you do that?
So um. It sounded like maybe a, an additional condition of approval would require um. Uh, I guess it would be uh an inspection from the ODA. To ensure that it was indeed hemp being grown and not marijuana, so some kind of documentation from ODA. Showing the uh results of that inspection. And then um about the light pollution shining up. A condition of approval could require the applicant to um. Uh accommodate the city's request if uh that light shining up into the sky. Passes a certain established uh threshold or um if the city. You know, deems it too much.
Okay. It's gonna be somewhat, we, is there any way we can simplify this uh to make it a little bit more? It sounds like that's gonna be awful difficult to figure out which one to put that with on these four choices that we have in front of us.
That would be the application with amended conditions.
Oh, yeah.
So I will ma- I will move to approve the application with amended conditions.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor. Can I get uh yay or nay from?
You need a second. You need a second.
Okay, I need a second. Do I have a second? I do not have a second.
So, so that fails for lack of a second.
Okay.
And then someone can make another motion.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to deny the application.
Okay, I have a denial on the floor. Uh, can I get a second on that?
Second.
You have a first and second. All those in favor, oh, well, let's do roll call on this one.
Okay, I'm gonna unshare your screen, Taylor.
Oh, yeah.
If I can see. I got it. Thank you. Okay, um, roll call vote, Councilor Dunsman.
This is to approve a denial?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Councilor Gates?
Yes.
Councilor Spangler?
Oh, no.
Councilor Ten Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Drinkling?
Yes.
So that motion passes, three to two.
Okay. So, moving right along, we are at uh the department committee report, so I will start off with Jerry on my left.
Um, I missed the arts commission meeting this week, so I've got nothing.
Okay, uh, let's see, Justin?
Jerry, you missed the art commission. You really did, huh?
Yeah.
I missed my meeting too. I got, I got nothing.
Nothing, Katie? Okay, and Casey?
Uh, I'm just really good at social distancing right now. Sorry.
Well, I had uh three meetings this week, so I have the Thursday night with the city managers and the mayors. Which was uh quite intuitive. Uh, everybody's talking about COVID nineteen, as you know, and who's opening, who's not. And how we do it and what way, and if the county's given us all the information. And uh Denise, you were a part of this. You kind of heard what was going back and forth. But I also reprimanded uh one of the mayors who actually put out the uh. Thing on social media about uh the cities that were involved in um going against the mayors. Are the, the governor's mandate about reopening. Um, there were a few cities that got up there and said that they uh wanted to open sooner and they weren't happy with it. And they mentioned five cities and Estacada wasn't included. Well, needless to say, I've been with that group since the beginning. I helped uh get them organized. Uh, to fight the fight for rural Clackamas County. But they failed to mention me, and that's okay. I understand that. But at the same time, I got a lot of aggressive phone calls the next day about what I wasn't or was doing in Estacada. I am fighting for Estacada day in and day out. Every moment of my day is spent on the phone, in a meeting, on a Zoom. Or wherever I may be, making sure that we are taken care of here. So I wanna clarify that as we move along. Um, I also had a, a meeting with the C four, and they're talking about the same thing. They talked about the T twenty twenty plan and where they're gonna spend the money on the I two oh five expansion, which is all great and fine. Um, but then the rest of the meeting was spent talking about COVID nineteen and how cities are gonna react to this. What they're gonna do and how soon are we gonna be open and is everybody prepared for this? So it seems like everybody's kind of going the same spot. And the last one was uh the LOC on Friday, uh in a Zoom meeting where the governor's office gave a, a semi. Uh example of their opening plan. As the county's open, that county has to be approved first. Then each city in the county has to be approved, and then businesses can start opening gradually. So there's a lot more to the process. You're gonna hear out there that everybody's ready to open now. That is not the case. So we need to make sure that everybody's clear on that. The LOC also talked about funding sources for small businesses and other things like that that we have access to. And a lot of that you can find online with the county if you go to their website. Other than that, it's been a pretty busy week, on and off. But I thank all of you for what you do. Okay, so moving along. We are now uh the city managers report.
Yeah, so um I too have had a number of meetings, not this week yet because it's Monday, but. Um, I have some standing meetings every week. Tuesday and Thursday mornings at seven thirty, there's a Clackamas County emergency management meeting. And that is a group of, led by the emergency management team of Clackamas County. And we get together with all the other cities in Clackamas County and talk about um the health issues that are going on. And what's gonna be planned and masks and all that stuff, and also um event closures. We're keeping a, a really um fine list of who's closing what and the discussion that um for events. We really all need to be on the same page with a number of events, one of those being the Fourth of July. And um one, you know, the cities have agreed that if, if one, if we all, if someone's closing, we all need to close. Otherwise, your, your event is gonna be um the one that everyone comes to that you don't want. So um the Malala Bakr-ou has officially closed. Um, most of the, the big ones have officially closed. The state fair has closed, the county fair has closed. Um, I have talked to PGE and EACE, and they are meeting tomorrow night. I think, I'm thinking to make it official that they will not have a timber festival this year. But I told them I would wait for their word to check that off on the list. Um, summer celebration is not gonna happen. Uncorked will not happen, and we're waiting a little longer to see about the harvest festival in September. Um, and then on Thursdays, I have the same meeting as the mayor. That's the mayor's, the managers in Clackamas County. And then also that afternoon, we have a, our staff meeting, the city staff meeting is on Thursday afternoons. And then on Fridays is the LOC um meeting where they have representatives from the federal government, the state government, the state emergency. Um, the health association. And then also I have the city managers, Clackamas County city managers on Friday's afternoon to talk about what has happened in the week. And, and we're trying to coordinate things like um how to release the holes in our libraries, that type of thing. So we all do it at the same time instead of one city doing something. There are kind of a few rogue cities that do things a little before everyone else, but eventually we catch up with them and we're all, we're all, those. It's not at the city manager level that those are rogue cities. I'm just gonna put it that way. City managers all agree, but there's the, the higher beings that, that kind of control that. Um, let's see, uh, I did wanna let you know, we did not receive the grant from the land and water conservation grant for Wade Creek Park Three. So now we're gonna be really digging in to try to find other grants to make up for that revenue and some other donations. But we are still working on that, and that still is in the works. There will be a couple of projects beginning. The Sixth Street pedestrian bridge crossing right there before the high school, between the high school and cemetery road, it started today. That should be done within two or three weeks, and the Schafford um job should, will start next Monday. So we do have a couple of projects that we're doing. Um, and then I just wanted to, I just before the meeting received this update, so I'm gonna go to it. I don't know. And I'm just gonna read this to you. So we all heard, most likely we all heard the governor on Thursday with her plans for how to move forward. And this is kind of a um, a short synopsis of what those plans were. So a portion of the retail industry was required, was required to close during the initial stay home save lives order. Included in the closures were furniture stores, art galleries, jewelry shops and boutiques. The governor's order lifts that mandate on May fifteenth statewide for those that can follow OSHA guidelines. And there is a, uh, those OSHA guidelines are referred to, if you can go to the website of the state. Without approval of the Clackamas County reopening application. So a lot of our businesses downtown, Mossy Rock, the art gallery, um Art Smith, all those things can open. As long as they follow the OSHA guidelines on Friday. Childcare, summer school camps and youth programs with limitations and specific guidelines. Are also going to be allowed to open on May fifteenth statewide without an approved Clackamas County reopening application. The county has learned that they need to hire sixty contact tracers, but that a hundred percent of those will be reimbursed by the state, meaning the funding to hire those. Not all of those will need to be medical personnel, and they do not all need to be hired for the county to receive approval on their reopening application. Therefore, the county expects to have a draft reopening application ready for the commission review this weekend. And to submit the plan next week pending the commissioner approval. The governor's office is aiming to turn those around within one week. So after all that, um either, it could be possible if they get that in by Friday, that by the next Friday, we would have approval. And that approval would mean there would be conditions for restaurants opening. Um, services such as barber shops, hairdressers, tattooing, that would all. There are certain guidelines that they will all find on the state website on conditions to open. But that could possibly happen um by the, what, a week from the fifteenth, so.
Denise, is that new update? Cause the last official statement that I saw from the Clackamas Committee or the Clackamas Commission was, was different.
Yeah, I got this at six oh seven tonight.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
And um so, so it looks like it is moving forward. I know that their main concern was hiring all the people for contact tracing. And a lot of the cities have reached out and said, we have some people, especially our librarians, that don't have anything to do. So if we can help out with that in any way, we can provide some of those people for you if they didn't have to be medical staff. So that's what they were looking into.
That's good.
Anyway, so it looks like it will be moving forward, and like I said, on Friday, there's quite a few businesses in the Estacada area that can open. If they follow the OSHA guidelines, so.
Well, that's good. Our downtown will look a little bit better with a few people walking around, huh? But we wanna make sure we still practice a, social distancing and, and try to be as effective as we possibly can, so make sure that happens.
I, I just wanna, I just want a haircut.
Yeah. Not that I got much on top, but the sides are getting a little fluff. All right, um, moving on to council business. We have the twenty twenty goals that we set. How are we doing on that?
Well, um, let me get to that. Hold on just a second, I gotta find. Um, well, I know it's been a while, but if you guys remember, um, I had, I had presented to you like six topics. And I said, these could be good for goals, and you guys said, yeah, just do that. And so I had to put, and I asked, is there any input? No one really had any, so. This is all, that, that's why I put it on council business instead of consent agenda, because these are my ideas of things. And, and in looking at it and with, with this hitting that we've been, um, so uh, these are probably more two-year goals than one-year goals.
That's good, that's good.
If, if everyone agrees with them and, and likes it, or wants to add something or take something off. All we need is just the consensus that, yeah, we like these and these are gonna be our goals, so.
Okay, can we have a refresher sent out on that, just so I have them in front of me, so I can uh take a look at it?
Yeah, they were in the packet.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll look.
It was all, it was all in the packet, yeah.
All right, all right.
Because it was a few.
And we'll all get back to you with our preferred goals that we wanna put forward. So I'm gonna make sure you look at that. Let's try to help her out to get the right ones in place.
So, so do you want them back on the agenda for approval next time, or do you wanna?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we put it back on for the next meeting and we'll see if we can get that approved?
Okay, but they're, they're in your, they're in your minutes, the twenty twenty city council goal, so. Or they're in the packet.
Right, that'll give us time to review it and make sure everybody's on the same page and get those back to you.
Okay.
Um, and we'll get them on there. So thank you for that. And we'll get them on there. So thank you for that. Uh, now we're at the quarterly financial report.
Sure, so this, I just, uh, I, last time councillor Dunsborough had asked it if there was anything that was glaringly wrong. I tried to do a little staff report. So just a couple of things was, you'll see that the contractual services for police services. And the revenue from the school is low because we've only been billed through November. And we should be billed through March, but they're just slow at getting that. So that's why those are low. And then the other thing was, there was a negative amount in um, in the Broadway building grant line item. Because we have spent the funds, but it was right at the end of March and we haven't received the revenues yet. So. Um, but we have, we did receive those shortly after this time period. So that's back up to, up to par. And everything else is looking good and we really don't know. You'll hear this tomorrow night, but we really don't know how our budget's going to be affected with this. And I guess um, not having, collecting TIF funds is a good thing for us right now. Because we don't depend on them like a lot of, of cities do. And so, but we, but it would have been nice during this time to have the CET funding that we don't have. So those things we probably will discuss within the next budget year.
Okay, before you go, how are we doing with people in the city? Are we getting a lot of calls for services being cut off? Or are they worried they can't pay their bills? Are we seeing a lot of that yet?
Um, I, I should have asked Sadie to check with Taryn and Tracy. But so for two months now, we have not did disconnections for non-payment. And we, we haven't been charging late fees. And so um, this last month, we checked and, and usually we have about 20 to 25 people on our shut off list. And there would have been 70. So we did send out personal letters to them saying, hey, we know we aren't. Because they are aware they aren't going to be disconnected right now. We know you, you are aware of that, but you still need to contact us and set up some payment plan or payment options.
Sure.
Talking to other cities, they say they aren't really having an issue because at the first month they did. But then people started getting their unemployment and their checks from the federal. And so people were paying their bills because they finally got caught up in the unemployment thing. So um, I, I don't know how those letters, we didn't send them out till Thursday. So they would have got them this weekend and I'm not sure today if we had a lot of calls.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, but hopefully those people that now will contact us and at least try to set something up.
Okay, great. We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, are there any more questions for Denise before I go past this? Okay, I'm at the next citizen and community group comments. I don't know, do I have any?
Let me, let me just check. We've got a second attendee. Um, so. Jordan, did you want us, did you have a question? If so, raise your hand on the, oh, here we go. We've got a chat. Hang on. Nope, no question from.
Okay. All right, then moving right along, we are at the mayor and council report comments. So let's start off with you again, Jerry.
You're muted.
I can't hear.
And then I hit the video button too. Uh, thank you guys for your hard work and everybody for showing up. That's all I got. Stay healthy, stay safe.
All right, great. Thank you. Uh, Justin?
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, just say really quick to the small businesses in Estacada and to you, Sean, as well. That if you need any help promoting Estacada to open. Uh, it's, it seems easy at times to sit back when you're not affected, right? I mean, I'm still going to my job. My life has not changed at all. And it's very easy to sit back and say, uh, you know, not to reopen in a sense. But that's not my stance and I do feel very bad to all the local businesses that we have that are shut down. And I hope that we can try to find a solution to get them reopened, whether it's following stricter guidelines for them or whatever. But um, I do feel extremely bad for those small businesses and it, it hurts to hear some that might not reopen. Uh, some that have been around Estacada for a long time. And I, I just, if there's any kind of push that we can do to try to get Estacada to reopen in a sense. Or uh, try to follow strict guidelines for Estacada or whatever, I'm, I am here and I am willing to help. So I just, I just wanted to throw that out.
Justin, I appreciate that comment. That is a really good one. Um, I'm sure the people have heard you. So you've done a great job. Thank you. Katie Dunsborough?
Uh, stay home and stay safe. Thank you guys.
Casey?
I just want to thank the city staff for being able to put this on for us and uh, make sure I'm not getting infected by anyone. And all the information's in the packet for me in advance. So it's great.
Great, thank you, Casey. And then on me, I would just like this to end so I can sleep at night. So uh, I don't have much to say, but I'm fighting hard for those very causes out there that we talked about, Justin. So let people know when they ask what the mayor does, please defend the mayor a little bit. And just tell them he's working as hard as he can. And that's all I ask for in a day. Is that people know that I'm doing the best I can on my part to get this city reopened and get things back to normal. So I appreciate everyone and I will disconnect and shut down the council meeting. So I appreciate all of you. Have a nice evening.